Regular City Council to work. You will stand and pledge allegiance to the public office. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, our nation under God, in the spirit of liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. At this particular point, just the city clerk recognizes that Ms. Van Tran at this point has not logged in. And if she does so, we will catch her accordingly. But until then, we'll just keep going. Ten agenda, approval of the June 9, 2020 regular meeting. Approval of the June 9, 2020 work session meeting. Approval of repair of the ladder truck in the amount of $28,107.26. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So move.
Do I hear a motion? I hear a second. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Qua?
Aye.
Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. You have before you the meeting agenda. Approval for the July 23rd. Everyone's had a chance to look at that. Any questions related to the meeting agenda? Do I hear a motion to approve?
So move.
Go ahead, a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Mr. Qua?
Aye.
Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Item number three, approval and authorization for staff to write off the outstanding downtown development authority balance owed to the city of Marrow in the amount of three billion, $369,607. We've had a chance to discuss that prior. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So move.
Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Mr. Qua?
Aye.
Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Confirmation, Public Works Director, Mr. Billy Warren. Approval of establishment salary. I believe the salary has been communicated with the entire city, I believe. Is that correct? Everybody? Do you want to tell them what is out there?
Yeah, it's the, I don't remember exactly the roundoff number. It's $80,000, is the established salary.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Mr. Qua?
Aye.
Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Authorization to allow city manager complete scope budget contract of interest letter for the COVID-19 Clayton County HUD Division grant. To authorize the mayor to execute any relevant documents to accept and manage this grant's award of $100,000 with the inclusion of, I believe the comments made earlier by Ms. Knight in terms of knowing who was going to be authorized and.
Share the qualifications that were determined and businesses chosen.
That's correct. Do I hear a motion? To approve based on that criteria?
Make your motion.
Mr. Qua? Do I hear a second? Got a motion. Do I hear a second?
I thought you.
Ms. Knight, did you make a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Mr. Qua?
Aye.
Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Approval authorized to reimburse the fees collected from delinquent property taxes in the amount of $66,334.63. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I hear a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Mr. Qua?
Aye.
Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. We have a public hearing. Proposed budget FY '21. I'll have an intro by the city finance officer.
So the proposed budget for fiscal year 2021. The overall budget, total budget for all funds is $13,976,258. The total budget is reduced by roughly 33.74%. The general fund budget, $8,676,165,000. It is reduced by 21,084 percent. 21.84%. I'm going to get tired tonight. For the most part, which, you know, it's very conservative budget because a lot of the revenues have to be reduced due to COVID-19. We've had some reductions in salary personnel. We've had some savings too, some things too, that help with kind of keep a budget where it is. But here this budget to the equity report that I gave you from early tonight or whatever, where I pulled out the sanitation fund. That budget is actually gone, that loan revenues are down by to about $8.8 million. So the budget for next year is close to, kind of is close to where we are this year, but it's less than where we are right now. Because this year, we still have a few more, probably some more revenue or whatever to come in. So it's still going to be less than our current, I would say our current collections and things like that. So, but I'll kind of continue to monitor everything for this year and hopefully some of the occupational tax money will come in. For the special revenue funds, which is made of your confiscated asset fund, your hotel motel tax fund and your tourism product development funds. The total for those is $802,68,000. Confiscated asset fund is $18,000. The hotel motel tax fund is $600,000. Which you could tell that is reduced by almost 50%. Again, due to COVID and reduction in hotel occupation occupancy. The tourism development fund is down, going to be down slightly as well, but just, I mean, very minimal, about like 1.72%. And that budget is going to be $184,268,000. Your SPOLOs funds, that, of course, your 2008 SPOLOs is pretty much over with. Only money you're collecting there is $500,000. Have money in that fund, but we have not designated any specific projects to spend that, those remaining funds. For your 2014 SPOLOs, the budget for that is $1.6 million. And again, you only have two projects in there, $200,000 for software and the remaining balance of $1.4 million is basically for your, what's that, creep projects? Just gesture creep project and stuff. And you still have a pretty, the fund balance in there is still about 2.7, 2, 2. It's 2.7 million right now. So you still have a little over 1.1 million remaining even with that $1.6 million spent. So, and your sanitation fund, which is going to go back into the, from the general fund next year in next year's budget, again, I'll just make that adjustment too for the current year in July. But that budget is going to be $1.3 million, $56,825,000. And that budget will be slightly up, but we're going to, I'm going to take the contract that you all signed, I believe, or approved in the last city council meeting, kind of go through that. I know that the fees for the residential, you want those to be whatever the vendor's charging, those will be the same, but for the commercial, I'll look at those and maybe come back with a proposal for, and you can look at how much you want to set those fees for. Because right now, the commercial accounts, we are earning money on those, you know? Like the equity report that I showed you right now, we've earned roughly $157,000 over expenditures, just basically from the extra money we're collecting from commercial businesses and stuff like that. Although if some businesses close, you know, due to COVID, going, and next year, that number may go down some. And then again, for the municipal court fund, that's primarily, it's just the money that we're collecting and holding for the state and the money that we'll hold to kind of pay back ourselves for court funds and court charges. And that's just, you know, and again, that fund needs to be set up primarily because you want to keep the cash, you have to by law, keep the money, the cash for the municipal court cash and the cash for the jail bond money separate from the general fund. And then one question I have with the inclusion of the, I think, approval of that, with approval of the $100,000 grant for the, from the SBA grant, yeah, the SBA grant, Small Business Administration's grant. And I guess at this time, if you all want to amend this budget to, go ahead and include that in the general fund and you just make, meaning you're increasing the revenues and expenditures for that? Or we can wait, because I plan to do kind of a mid-year, I can do a mid-year.
Let's wait until we can get it.
Yeah.
Because we've got a clean document we've looked at.
Okay.
And that way we know what it is we have.
And we aren't likely to get the notice to protect the city until after July 1?
Couple weeks.
Okay. And then the, you just had the delinquent tax refund, $66,234,000. What I'll do, since I've got it solid, I'll have a detailed list of what that is. I should be able to put that in this current fiscal year and expense it and just show it as a liability, even though we may not get it paid off. We don't have time probably to pay it, issue refunds to everybody about June 30th. It will, I'll put it in this year's books, so that when I come back with the. Yeah, when I come back with a final budget amendment, I can include that there.
This year budget amendment, not next year.
Yeah, well, yeah. For the record, I want to say two things, just to clarify. The SPOLOs 2008 does have a project list in the referendum. Just to clarify that. And then the last council meeting, we did not sign a contract. We simply selected the sanitation vendor. The contract is meaningful.
And because it's a public hearing, now you've had a chance to listen to all kinds of numbers. I know you kept track of that with your little tally point. Everybody else did this all mentally. And we're able to acquire all of that and figure it out. We have tabs here if somebody wants to read one. You're more than welcome to. Do I hear any comments from the public? And you're welcome to read it. I think it's available online too, and all the reiterations that we've had, I think, are also available online.
Yes, and if you will, we have copies of the iterations and the final budget will be available online. But there is also our books here, you can come and push your hand on them if you want to.
Remember, it's your money? All right. No comments? Then we'll go back.
I would like to make a comment.
She, go ahead.
I would like to make a comment. I did want to bring up the 401K match that was removed from the budget. We kind of breezed over what was cut. And I do understand significant amount, significant portion of that 21.84% reduction in the budget came from moving items out of the general fund. But with regard to the 401K match for employees, that was not something that was brought up specifically and discussed and pointed out. So I wanted to be clear. I don't know what the feedback was from regarding, you know, employees, the department has, what communication was provided to employees that there was going to be a change to their benefits. None of that was discussed.
Part of the, the larger increase was related to the retirement plan for the city. The 85 rule costs you an additional $250,000. You know, well over and above the projected $77,000. When you look at that.
That's not what I was referring to.
I understand.
I was referring to saying the 401K match for this year.
The first part. Then the second one is the city has a second retirement program, which was always designed to say budget available. In other words, we're cutting everything that we've got and ultimately digging into the bone a little bit. And the idea is that we've already, you know, had to reallocate, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars for a retirement fund, you know? And this one was designed separately to say, assuming budget is available. Well, there's not a lot of budget available for anything. Additionally, it doesn't get cut off immediately. It appears there's a resolution that still has to be passed. And then I think it takes anywhere from 60 to 90 days to actually. And I believe that number was worth about $44,000.
So again, this was something that was not discussed and it involved a resolution to make the change.
It does.
We're finding out about it now, the second public hearing, based on an inquiry that was never discussed through this budget process.
So the discussion about the resolution will happen after this regular meeting because it's stuff that we've discussed with GMA. I will disagree that, as a city manager, this is a cut I've made before in the past that we had a resolution for. But sometimes you don't always get to let the staff lead the decision on the cuts. I mean, we had, you know, I don't mean to tell you anything you don't already know, but I'm not sure we would have asked the staff's opinion when we made some pretty hard decisions this year, just like when we've done in the past with the 911 Center, for example. You just, you have to sit down with your finance officer and say, you know, what can we do to make this work in a time that's really troubling? And yeah, I appreciate that it's not ideal, but for the record, we would want to make sure that if the council person is uncomfortable that it wasn't discussed, we need to say for the record, it needs to be included in the minutes so that we never go back and say, between the first reading and the second reading, something was done outside of the public eye, because that would never be our position. So for the record, and will be reflected in the minute, one of the cuts in the budget process was the matching funds associated with the 401A.
Assuming second retirement program.
Yeah, which is the defined contribution. And the staff member can still contribute, but the city won't be matching. And again, just in my five years here, this is the second time we've cut those, that match as a measure of trying to balance a budget. So, but we do want to get that on record for, to make sure we're satisfying all the requirements set forth by law. That any changes made between the first and second reading are reflected in the minutes.
And also throw one other point in that is as we're trying to create a budget based on the knowns, right? Which we still have a tremendous number of unknowns moving forward. In other words, we still have the virus issue. We still have significant losses in revenue projections. But let's assume some of that stuff corrects itself, right? We always have the ability to come back in and make you hope, right? And that just takes basically the council itself to say, you know, if that's a priority, then we could set that priority and actually make that match.
Yeah, I think.
And it should be a priority for information and conversations for the sake of the council's benefit and understanding the information that's being provided to us that we're not glossing over and moving out of step when certain things should have a conversation, information shared and notification applied.
Agreed.
But again, the conversation about the resolution that's going to be required is part of the work session conversation because it's stuff that we just had conversations, was it just last week, right, as with GMA? So, and it quite often, if you're going to reestablish it, it may take a resolution then too. And so you may say, well, if you've done this before, Sylvia, why didn't you know about the resolution? Because we had an updated plan at the same time it all happened at once. It just wasn't a single decision, so. But, you know, certainly we want to work to give you all the information. Part of it, I think, and I hope you don't hear this, is make any excuse to the whole council is because we're not all sitting in the same room. And, you know, that may bear upon how we're sharing the conversation. So I always encourage the council, come by and see me, ask me questions. We, my staff and I work diligently to get you all the information, but sometimes we're going to miss every, every conversation that we have internally. We may miss a time or two. So I apologize, Councilwoman Knight, that you feel that you were, it was glossed over. That was not my intent. And we will work to make sure that doesn't happen again in the future.
Any other comments, Ms. Knight?
With regard to the budget, I did mention previously the idea of we have several signature events that are called Billy Bay, I brought up a Black Haired Ditch Film Festival. It was mentioned previously. I did ask about funding for it. And I want to make sure that on the record, there is funding for it, for us to bring it online in the upcoming fiscal year. I believe it was mentioned that that will come out of the Hotel Motel Act.
Yes, ma'am. And that's separate from your general fund? That's going to be your product development fund and that's just a matter of bringing it up?
Yes, it is a different fund, but I do want to make sure that we are capturing that and it is clear, it is part of the public record, that we will provide the funding as a city, just as we have other cultural events that will be funded by the city for this upcoming fiscal year.
If I may, to make sure that we're going to feel like our conversation isn't matching, it is not currently listed in the budget. Is that right, Ms. Knight?
Well, because it's a product development.
Right. But just like with any of those specialty taxes or funds, you guys can vote to spend it at any point. But I feel like, I just want to make sure if Councilwoman Knight is asking that it is in the current budget on a specific page, no, it is not.
But neither is the Hispanic command as well, right?
Yeah, well, that's because we may have taken it out of a different fund last year.
Correct.
And you're right, yeah, so.
So Product Development Fund has half a million dollars in give or take. I don't know that, you know, it could be just me, but I don't think I've seen a proposal on that as to even what your budget request is. But the point being is, I think the city council has agreed that that's an event we want to do. Detail is pending. And as far as I know, you're driving that ball, so you tell me. But I don't see anybody opposed to it. But it is noted.
All of this is for the record.
Yes, ma'am?
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else from the public? All right, we'll close that public hearing. Second, the defense's budget we were just talking about. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So move.
I hear a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Ms. Knight, or not Ms. Knight, Ms. Dean, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Mr. Qua?
Aye.
Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. As we've stated earlier, the 2020-08 spending hiring freeze, obviously we've now endorsed a budget and we want to be able to maintain a tighter set of controls than the traditional budget ordinance would normally allow. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
I hear a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Mr. Qua?
Aye.
Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. General comments, city manager?
Second, sir.
General public, I see some people from the public that, I saw you bring, did you bring a sign? This will be a time.
I brought, for the garden, community garden.
If I may.
Oh, please, go ahead.
Introduce Deborah Maxson. She's the president of our community garden.
Hi.
If I know you were waiting, we'd have stood up and set her up. I'm sorry.
We recently had someone to ask about the gardens rules about being on city property and why we're charging membership fees. They think that it should be open to the public and free. So what we're asking is that the council look at that. I don't know as far as what we have rules or whatever, you know, with the city, anything like that.
Don't feel bad. We actually charge these as a community rent too, and that's just about the same thing.
Right. So we'd like to, you know, have something that the city is aware of in the event that Mrs. Jones, I'm just using that.
Okay.
Comes to the city and say, you know, why can't we, you know? And the garden, we maintain the garden, you know, the property. We have to replace planters as they were. We're responsible for all of our soil and everything. We also contribute to different charities and events. And we also have, you know, community things where we invite the public to annual picnics to celebrate our anniversary. And Deborah has some information I'd like for her to share with the mayor, council and public.
I have brought, we were a spotlight project for the extension here in Clayton County that we made it all the way to the state. And so we were recognized by the state of Georgia and UGA as a food production spotlight in 2016. Who do I give this to?
The city clerk over there.
Well, how about you hit it to me so I can at least hear it?
I've brought, I'll talk to everybody. Let me just pass it out? Okay. So that is a good recap. In 2016, we were off and running really well.
Make sure Ms. Knight gets a screenshot of that.
We were created in 2012. And I have to say, at that time, we probably had about 35 original members. We are now down to 26, but we have half of them as founding members within the first two years. And the majority of them are from 12. And I'm one of them that was from 12 also. And I have to say that as being the president and have attended leadership conferences within the ARC Commission that they have for community garden leaders, they always say that a community garden is more successful if you do have a fee involved because it makes the people more accountable. Doesn't have to be a lot, but there is a high accountability factor that is involved with the participation and it being mostly taken serious by those involved in it. They already have a stake in it and therefore they are trying to make sure that they get their money's worth, in other words, instead of just having it free. We have, I have a few little pictures here that go back to our archives that show from the very beginning, we were very simple, open garden area. And, but we were very productive. This is the, this is the original article that they had on us with our inception. And then this is the presentation that also went along because we are a raised garden. It extended out to, my talk was about how raised gardens can be untraditional or traditional. We are very much a traditional raised garden here in Clayton County and in the city of Marrow. And we are open because of the original funding. We do have members from Forest Park. We have members from Lake City. We are open up, as long as you are a community, a member of Clayton County, you can be a part of our community garden. So we're not exclusive there to anything but Clayton County. But we do have, we do have a fee. And every year, people, we've had waiting lists. We are completely booked this year. All of our beds are accounted for. We have had inquiries that we've had to say, we're sorry, we don't have an open. So we are very, still very much living up to the inception. We were to be a community building unit as a lifelong gardening community. And we have basically made that from the beginning because we had people that ranged in, I'd say twenties to seventies in the inception. And we now have people that range from 30 to 86 in the garden. So we are fulfilling our mission 100%.
But I think it's wonderful. It looks very organic. We can get the tomato from Kroger, it doesn't taste nearly as.
No, it does not. And I have to say, we are very much interested in knowing, we have been told that we will be having a new home in the future.
We hope so.
Yeah.
I mean, the good news is you've got a pretty strong advocate over there. And Ms. Dorothy is not shy. And she, she's capable. So I think you're going to be in very good hands. It's just a matter of not only looking at what's available, but really what it is that we have that will facilitate what you're doing. You know, it's not a displacement so much as let's take it and let's even grow it further than what it is.
That's what we're hoping very much because.
This city has tremendous amount of green space. Tremendous, right? That means all the requirements that you're going to need and then some, right? In other words, I think my opportunity is greater than your capacity by far. But I think there'll be others that have an interest that's slightly different. Maybe, maybe not so much gardening or, or than it's just, you know, like the gardener club. But when I used to years ago drive people around the city, I don't do green well. In other words, if you ask me what it is, it's either grass or a shrub or a tree. That's it. But there's people who do know and, you know, they have a lot of respect and Qua knows some things as well, that are very hard to grow. So when you look at it and you're going, do you know what that is? Of course, my answer is no. But it's things that are very complicated, you know? And it's like, I'm surprised somebody was able to get it to grow here. So we have a trail system, you know, that literally is just waiting for, you know, more of a natural element. We've got some pretty cool property that I think would meet your needs. And we're going to let her decide what. And we're going to let her decide what, what vets certainly need, you know? So we know we have well water, we know we have other things, but we want you to be secure, safe, happy, hopefully in all of those categories. And I think we'll do it easy enough.
But that sounds good. We are doing more and more research into other community gardens that are very successful within the Atlanta area, and we see their potential and how they have grown. And we would like to very much expand our garden.
I think that'll be easy enough. I mean, it's usually it's all about capacity, right? Some people are on rooftops and things like that. We have acres, literally, not quite farmability, but pretty, pretty close if that's what some of them want to do. And why not? It makes you happy and invites you to be participatory in the community, and we ought to be high on that 100%.
Now, we have so many cultures here that garden so differently. And right now, we are very much traditional gardens, so we would look forward to having an area to include people.
I will say, the garden club was always amused, I mean, I use that word loosely, by the rather plastic-looking plants that might have been acquired by some people in front of their house. They thought that might be a little unfair, but.
Those are different kinds of plants. We're talking veggies. Those are flowers. We, we put the flowers in the garden for the bees.
I think the mayor was trying to, at one time, he was noticing on one of his ride-alongs how pretty some plants were, and the people in his car said.
I think I know what you're talking about, too.
And he was like, really?
So all you need was a little pink flamingos to go with that, and you would have been right up my alley.
And if I may add, before we go further, for the future, you know, whenever that time is, we need time to plan and organize for the move, so we'd like to have an advance.
And you'll have that.
You know, notice.
Matter of fact, I could actually envision something right concurrent. In other words, you know, it's not just a move from here to here. Once, once our public works director finds his feet on the ground, I would say that the economic development stuff over there is going to be a little further behind, especially based on the virus. It's, everything's going to kick back. And you'll see the planning, you'll live the planning until everybody else is around. But I don't see a reason to wait. I think it's one of those where once you've decided, here's what you've got, you've got the team, you know, thank you, Tom.
Okay. And the other thing is, because of the situation with the lady, we feel in other, other times we've had people to jump the fence and be in the garden. So we'd like to put up something on the gates. I don't know if it's wise to say no trespassing or members only.
Sure.
We see property, we'd like to know, we'd like some guidance on that.
But just like our building, you can't just walk into this building anytime.
So, and Dorothy is, she's not asking us to pay for it. She just wants the permission to do it.
And there's a how to.
Yeah, yeah.
Like you said, it's a good program, you know, we'll support you.
Yeah.
That's just reality.
So members only, no trespassing, no problem?
I don't think it is, but I would defer to the attorneys to the wording. I'm sure there's a way to make it happen.
That's what, that's what we need, right?
Just, just like every other park that we have, you can't just wander into everything just simply because it's public property. I mean, we have a lock on this door for a reason. And even the park, it closes at dark, you know? So if you're saying it's mine forever, I'm not sure. Pivotal, you can't just use it, I mean, if they're available, you can. You know, but I think we've done this before. But I think they call it a license, not so much a, you know, like a lease or something. There are ways to make that happen, that part, I guarantee. You've got to make it work for everybody.
All right.
So that's easy enough.
Thank you.
So, other citizens, any other comments?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am?
Wayne's going to help me here. You know, we are under stressful attack. Yeah, get that big over there behind you. Come on, Wayne. Got to crack them up. I'm sorry, I'm being tired, sorry, major. Come on, Wayne. Showing, showing his age.
Yeah, and we know that, that times are really stressful. And, and we, the citizens, appreciate all our, our members that are working for us, okay, from the fire department to the police department, to the public works, to the city employees. And we just cannot say thank you enough for everything that you do. There was a misconception that we did some signs for, for that appreciation. These, this was not city tax dollars that were used. These were funds raised by the citizens. So these signs are from the citizens to our programs. So if you'll bring up this. Come on, Wayne, please give it to Sylvia.
Y'all are going to quit volunteering. I volunteer for the arm.
I think you were drafted, actually. So we just, we just wanted to say thank you to, to everybody because we know there's just a lot of stress, and we just, we just can't say enough. And if it was up to me, I'd have champagne for all of you.
Can it be up to her?
But that, you know, it's just words, so we thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other members of the public, as you know. Members of the city council, you know, any comments from the city council? Ms. Dorothy?
Of course. I'd like to also say, you know, thank you to the staff, all of our departments during this time, you're away from your families and having to do extra work, you know, being safe and protecting the public coming into the buildings and everything. And this is not an easy time for anyone. I'd just like to say thank you to all of you as well. And please be safe. Don't take anything for granted. Practice safety and, because unlike all of you people, and I like to continue to be around you.
That's the nicest thing you've said about me.
You notice I said you people.
Anyone else, any comments? Qua?
If I may, like you said, you know, it's a stressful time to do the budget, but, you know, finally we got it done. And in the past few months, we have to deal with all the stuff from the pandemic. That's been really hard for everybody, especially the fire department, police. Really appreciate the work that you guys done. Thank you.
Ms. Knight?
And everybody else.
Ms. Knight?
I think Lana, I think Lana captured it best. Citizens and council members, we do appreciate the city hall staff and everything that they do every day. And again, stay healthy, be safe during this difficult time.
And my comments is we have basically the fireworks celebration, I believe, if you want to at least do that a little bit.
Yeah, sorry about that. I have a big old freedom vote. So six to nine this Saturday, the timeframe is a little bit abbreviated. We are, we met, in fact, today to go over all the nuts and bolts of it. We are confident that we can offer this community a secure place to enjoy and celebrate not only our patriotism, but this year specifically, a reflection of our local heroes, our police, our fire departments, public works, doctors, nurses, you know, the people, I just get so emotional, who got us through it, who are still getting us through this pandemic. And so we encourage you all to, to come out and join us. We're going to be responsible with you, and we expect you to be responsible with yourselves. And together, we're going to have a good event Saturday, six to nine.
Tell them about the squares on the ground.
Oh, yeah. So we are, I got, I stole this from a park in New York where they actually spray paint on the surface of the grass areas, and for the, our purpose, it'll be the size of a piece of plywood, plywood, is that right? The big rectangle, yeah.
Yeah, white.
So we'll be spray painting those spaces all over the field. So, and there's an entrance direction and an exit direction, and that really satisfies some of the governor's guidelines so that you can come into the field, find a designated area, and retain that space for the duration of the event. Or if you choose to be in a car in the parking lot, we'll have the transmitter there that you can listen to the live music and then ultimately watch the fireworks. There are limited food trucks, so we, if you want to bring a picnic basket, a cooler, you're certainly allowed to do that. We're going to have a lot of people in the field, making sure that, you know, people are remembering that the big rectangles on the grass are there for a reason, and we're trying to encourage everybody to stay within those. There'll be hand sanitizing stations. And again, it'll seem a little different because all the rides and the gangs aren't there, but we did that to maintain the necessary crowd control to maintain a safe environment. And then there will be no, and I want to say this because there'll be no portable toilets on site, but we are using one of the restrooms inside one of the buildings in the church so that we can maintain sanitizing at a greater level, but it'll require a smaller walk, a littler, longer walk than where, that you, they, you're accustomed to them being. But we just feel like it's a necessary measure to, it's secure safety, so.
And I've never really heard anyone complain that they love portable potties anyway. So having a facility that is clean reasonably, I think you'll come out way ahead of that. So we certainly want to appreciate all the folks that were involved in that and looking at it forward. And thank you, Ms. Jaden. And no other questions, we'll go right into ending this meeting, and we'll go right into the work session.